So I'll call to order the Ware School Board Public Hearing on the 2021-2022 budget.
Do you want me to go ahead, Wendy?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, it's 6:59. It's probably safe to start.
All right, well, as I think most of you on this Zoom know, the budget process begins before school even begins. So, you know, we start in August to talk about the next year. We begin gathering information that about factors that are going to influence the budget for that following year. We look at curriculum needs, we look at projected enrollment, we look at our IEP needs and what our specific student needs are. We look at what our building needs. And so we meet throughout the fall within with building principals, myself, then we bring a budget to the board, start to talk about what those initial numbers are and work it through till we get to this point, presenting it to you, to the board. And hopefully at this meeting, the board adopts it as their budget. As we go through the process, the budget development is grounded in these ideas. We want to and we strive to address the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students. We went through a whole portrait of a learner, developed a portrait of an, say, U24 learner last fall into this, into 2020. And so we're looking to support students in becoming respectful collaborators, effective communicators, and knowledgeable problem solvers and creators. We want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students, including those who have learning disabilities. And throughout the whole process, we're also focused on taking a look at is what we're doing working and how can we do it better? How can we have more operational efficiencies? How can just our curriculum be better? How can we improve student learning? We do that within our PLCs at the schools. We do that at our leadership meetings. We do that each week with my team at the SAU when we talk about what are we working on and how do we know it is working? So that's built in to what we're doing, and it is the foundation for the budget that I'm going to present to you today. One thing to note that if you look at enrollment, October 1, we use the October 1 enrollment each year as a comparison point. Our numbers, we're at 871 for our October 1 enrollment right now. That is an 87 student decrease from last year. Couple factors go into that, I mean COVID goes into that. One, we're not running a typical preschool. So Chris mentioned that we're not receiving tuition for preschool. We're not running a typical preschool. The decrease is actually almost exclusively within our elementary. So younger and actually more heavily in the kindergarten first and second. And so in trying to predict what enrollment will be the following year, families made some decisions about how they wanted to handle and navigate COVID. And so I don't know if they'll make different decisions next year. So we're trying to figure out that and figure out what that means for us and our budget. Greg, if you're on, can you make sure you're letting people in? So enrollment is just one of the challenges that was brought on by the pandemic this year that we've had to grapple with, as Jess alluded to. We've partnered with families to make this as positive as we can for our students. And I'm really, really proud of the efforts that have got that our staff have undertaken to connect with our students each day. We've created many different avenues for our families to meet our families' needs and to meet our students' needs. As you know, we prioritized having our youngest students in the building. And so our K through 5 students have actually missed very few days this year because we had a five-day model and because we haven't needed to have full shifts to remote at that K through 5 level very often. You know, I dare to say that we, we if you look around New Hampshire, I think we've been able to be in school more than a lot of the districts around us and around the state. So getting to the budget and the numbers, really the focus here is on Article 3 and on Article 4. The our budget and our collective bargaining agreement. Currently, we're operating under a budget in the amount of $15,731,745. That was the voter-approved budget. It's actually the default budget, and that's our starting point for these discussions. The proposed budget that I'm going to detail tonight is a $16,685,937 budget, which is an increase of $954,193 from the current budget. That's a 6.07% increase. Our default budget is at $16,563,067, which is an increase of $831,322.94. So a 5.28% increase over the current budget. Right off the top, one of the biggest factors that goes into that large number that we're putting forward as an increase is that we made an accounting change. Throughout the years, where students have been supported by the IDEA grant. The IDEA grant is a federal grant. It's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Grant. And it helps to meet the needs of some of our students who are identified. We made the decision, so up right now, currently, those funds are consolidated at the SAU. And so they weren't represented, and they aren't right now represented in the Ware budget. The increase you see, the $406,350 increase, represents shifting that from a consolidated model to putting it into the district, the Ware District budget. That's a more accurate representation of the full budget that supports the students of Ware. It, so those funds, we have to create a budget to spend money. We have to create a budget line for it. So that $406,000 will be offset by corresponding IDEA grant revenues within the budget. And so this budget increase does not raise taxes locally. And it represents 2.58% of the 6.07% increase that I'm putting forward. So represented a different way. We've got the $9,500, 954,000 dollar increase. Subtract the $406,000 increase. Gets you the increase that has tax impact at $547,843 or a 3.49% increase. The next factor that impacts the budget this year is the mandatory New Hampshire Retirement Employer Contribution Rates. We, as part, we are required to contribute to the retirement funds, New Hampshire Retirement Fund for our teachers. And we are currently participating and contributing at a rate you see under current rate. For our teachers, it's at 17.8% of their salary. And for other employees who are covered under the retirement, it's at 11.17%. They set the rates based on actuarial valuation, and they are increasing it by 3.22% for the teachers and 2.89% for the other staff who have that other rate. So that 3% increase is on salary, total salary, and results in a significant increase. So that mandatory retirement contribution rate for the employer in the Ware, in the budget we're putting forward, is $166,498.98, representing 1.06% of the 3.49% increase that raises taxes. The other increase of significant, last year when I presented, we were fortunate enough to have a guaranteed maximum rate for our healthcare premiums at negative, I think it was negative 2.3. And so we were guaranteed that our healthcare premiums were going to go down. We are not as fortunate this year. Our guaranteed maximum rate for our health insurance premiums, the most it can go up, is 7.3%. We're hopeful it'll go up less than that, but what we're required to budget for is at that guaranteed maximum rate. And so within the Ware budget, that is a $239,019 increase or 1.52% of the increase. So looking at the whole proposed budget, that proposed budget increase over this year is the $954,000 increase, offset by the increased the grants, the federal grants, and the offsetting revenue, the $406,350. That gets us to the 3.49% increase. And then we have the retirement contributions, the GMR rate. The other costs that go into that are the other related benefits, our long-term disability rates went up, our SAU district shares for Ware went up because the SAU is also dealing with the healthcare and the mandatory retirement rate increase. Contracted services that relate to IEP needs. And additionally, within our proposed budget, ah, sorry, we have a $68,407 increase that represents our general transportation contract increase. So this number was actually in last year's budget, proposed budget. You know, we transferred our students, and that's a commitment we make. But the general transportation contract increase actually can't go in the default budget. It is something we need to pay. So because we had our default budget last year, that number gets, we needed to pay it this year, but the increase gets carried over into this year's proposed budget. And you can't see, oh. So that, that actually brings us above the $547,000 increase. Within the proposed budgets, and I'll talk about this a little bit more, we have some additions and some increases within budget lines. We did some shifts. And so there's actually, it resulted in a net loss of $28,000. So jumping over to the default budget, the default budget is a formula that consists of this year's budget figure, subtracting one-time expenditures, plus or minus contractual obligations, and health, safety, legal issues that were mandated to tackle. So our default budget comes in at $16,563,068. That is $122,870 less than the proposed budget that I just talked about. Looking at this another way, we've got the default budget, our current budget, the increase between those, it's a $831,000 increase. And then we've got the proposed budget that I talked about with the default budget and the $122,869 difference. So looking at a side-by-side with the, within the object lines, so if you're looking at the documents that are on the webpage, within each of the lines, that you can see that there are cuts and adds in the various lines. And this, really, this, the only new item that we're putting forward is currently our tech coordinators. We have a tech coordinator in each of the buildings. They are currently on a 210-day contract. And we're seeking $25,000 to make them full-year employees, 260-day employees. They would get benefit, I mean, they would get vacation. So we're not adding all of those days because there is vacation time with that. But we're finding even before COVID that we had a need for, in fact, had provided supplemental contracts for both of them to help us get some of the things we needed to get done. That, of course, has been exacerbated by what we're dealing with now. So that is really calling out the only new proposal item that is within our, what we're putting forward. Within the salary lines, within the proposed budget, what you're seeing is we've shifted contracted services for our facilities manager from salary to purchase services. I mentioned this at our previous meeting. Currently, our, it doesn't really belong in the salaries line because it's, we purchased the services. We share that position with Henneker. And so that's where it belongs. We also, we, as you, I think some of you know, we've had difficulty staffing custodians at Center Woods. And we were using contracted services for a few years and had some difficulty with that. We are shifting from contracted services into the salary line and seeing if we can make it work that way. And we are actually, I think we just hired someone who I think started yesterday, Jess. And then, so also, also within this line is the tech coordinator change in their position that I mentioned previously. The benefits, the, the difference between the two represents associated benefits with the tech coordinators and the other shifts that happened. Under purchase services, I mentioned that there was an increase to the SAU budget and the district shares for Ware. There is a new technology position at the SAU. Within Ware, Ware's piece of that was actually offset with a cut. We cut an instructional coach position. And so Ware's contribution to that offsets the cost within the SAU budget of the tech position. We had a number, if you look through the budget itself, you'll see some cuts and adds within the special ed lines. Those represent student needs. And as I mentioned before, this is where the shift for the facilities manager shifted to purchase services from salary. So that's, that's all within this line. So there's a lot going on with that, the $3,000 decrease. Within property services, that is where the custodial contract was, and that got added to salary. We had some decreases within our disposal services and some general repair decreases. I mentioned under other purchase services, the transportation contract, that is where that is. And then within the other lines, you'll see miscellaneous cuts and shifts within those lines. So the increases from this current budget to the default is the $831,322. The increase from the default to the proposed is $122,869, getting us to that total proposed increase. As, as you're aware, I'm sure, most of our increase and most of our budget is, consists of salaries and benefits. That's actually 66% of the proposed budget we're putting forward. And any questions about the budget or the default budget before I move into Article 4? Okay. So Article 4 is our teacher's contract. As I said in Henneker last night, and I'll say on Friday at John Stark, you know, I am grateful and honored to work with the teachers that I work with. All of our teachers came into negotiations as community members, first and foremost. They understood the moment that we're in. And so the Ware teachers, they negotiated a contract that the salary grid did not change. They did not seek a, an increase to the actual salary. What they were looking for was to continue the contract and to continue to move up the one step that they would move. And so that was the agreement that we came to. The raises are between $950 and $1,400 per person. And one thing within that that teachers need to contend with is the 7.3% increase, potential increase to health insurance is also something that they have contributions to health insurance, and theirs will also go up. And so that's, you know, baked into this. Um, so doing the math, you know, how did we end up with a warrant that is $5,935? Every year when we're within negotiations, that first year of the contract is offset because if you read the warrant, it says that Ware School Board and WEAA, this is the agreement, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level over those paid in the prior fiscal year. And so while the whole contract, the whole increase is about $100,000, because there were four retirements, and four retirements are a lot in a year, those folks are retiring after long service in our district, and there, we're going to hire at a lower rate. And so it is going to only cost us about $6,000 more next year than it does this year because of those retirements. This is a practice we always do. It's extremely obvious this year because the increase, what we're putting on the warrant is so low. And so we don't normally have four retirements in a given year. When we're looking at the projected tax rate for our proposed budget, we have what we project, that first column is what we projected last year. And and then what was adopted. So we projected it for the proposed budget, $10.14. The default budget is what passed, so the $9.85. What was adopted and after we returned funds, we came in at $8.899. And so going into next year, we've got a projection with our proposed budget of a $10.73 per thousand tax rate for our proposed and a $10.59 for our default. Adding on Article 1, that is a 1 cent per thousand increase, bringing the total projected tax rate increase for our proposed budget at $1.75 per thousand and for our default at $1.61 per thousand. Breaking that, or extrapolating that for a $250,000 house, it's a $437.50 increase. And this is where two screens would be helpful. And with the default, it would be a $402.50 increase. I have mentioned, and Chris has mentioned, adequacy. We're going to take a hit with adequacy. And that is reflected in these numbers, both because our enrollment, the 87 student decrease in enrollment, they use the October 1 numbers to project out. And so in addition to the straight-up base adequacy of about $3,700, there are other add-ons to that, including if students qualify for free and reduce lunch. We're having issues with that because folks aren't completing the application because everyone qualifies this year because of the waiver from the federal government. And so that is all reflected. It's a significant decrease in revenue from state adequacy monies, and that's here. Chris, anything to add to that?
That's, no.
I don't.
Okay. And so to summarize, these are the four articles. I focused on Article 3, the budget, and then Article 4, the teacher's contract. Any questions about that?
There were a couple of questions that came up at the Finance Committee meeting last week when we spoke to them about our budget. And one question had to do with, you know, what would, what would a million-dollar cut look like to our budget? And so I did a little bit of homework on that. And, you know, that would be about over 11 teaching positions with their, with benefits, the whole position. And it would also, if we were, and actually, I did create a slide. If I were to add up our supplies lines, our books, our software, you know, all of these, everything under the teaching positions, that comes to about $800,000. So if we were to cut all of that, we still
um, we still, you know, don't get to the million. Um, the other number that got thrown out was what happens with a one percent cut to the proposed budget? And that would be a hundred and sixty six thousand, eight hundred and fifty nine dollars. You know, that would be uh a couple teaching positions. Um, it could be athletics with co-curricular, or we could look at a twenty percent plus cut to our supplies, books, repairs, because those are the areas of the budget where um, where we have control over. Um, and so I didn't have an answer to that when I was asked, and and so that is my response.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody have anything? So is that it for the public hearing? That is it. All right. So with that said, I will close the public hearing for the twenty twenty one, twenty two, ninety two budget and unbesess, and we'll move back to our regular scheduled meeting.